Lee. Oscar, I think we are ready to begin.
Great. All right. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the 2023 Cost Growth Target Public Hearing. My name is Oscar Arana. I use he/him pronouns, and I am the Chair of the Oregon Health Policy Board. I also work at the Native American Youth and Family Center, where I have the privilege of serving as a community development director. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. Containing a rising healthcare cost has been a board priority since its inception. Board members, OHA leadership, staff, and many stakeholders have been working very hard over the years to implement the Cost Growth Target Program. Cost containment has been one of the four stated board priority areas for the last few years, and will continue to be a board priority moving forward. The board is excited to see the Cost Growth Target Program move into this phase of its work. Last week, OHA published its first report describing cost growth trends for identified payers and provider organizations. Today's public hearing provides additional transparency in understanding cost growth and its drivers in Oregon. This work will help us continue and to collaborate as a state in containing healthcare costs for people without jeopardizing access or quality, and help improve health equity by making healthcare more affordable and accessible to all Oregonians. Next slide, please. Today's agenda focuses on healthcare cost growth from 2020 through 2021. First, we will hear from several opening speakers to provide an overview of Oregon's Cost Growth Target Program and the purpose of today's hearing. Then we'll ground ourselves in the impacts that high healthcare costs are having on people in the state, and hear several powerful stories that really emphasize why Oregon is focusing on healthcare affordability. Next, OHA staff will present the 2020 through 2021 data and key findings from the report released just last week. Then we'll finish with a facilitated panel to hear perspectives and reflections on the data from several payers and provider organizations. Next slide. Please be aware that this is a public meeting and is being recorded, and the recording will be posted online later this week. We politely ask that folks, please mute themselves and stay off video unless you're speaking. If there are questions or comments, please enter them in the meeting chat. Next slide. We are not holding a verbal public comment session as part of today's agenda. Please submit any written comment via email to healthcare.costtarget@oha.oregon.gov. There will be an opportunity for additional public comment at the second part of the 2023 public hearing on September 14. Next slide, please. We are holding the 2023 public hearing in two parts. Today's meeting focuses on presenting the data and understanding trends and cost drivers in Oregon. September's meeting will focus on hearing more from payers, provider organizations, and other stakeholders. Your questions and comments in the chat today and public comments submitted after today's meeting will help inform the agenda and panelists for September. So please make sure to save the date on your calendars now for September 14. We have some incredible leaders and speakers with us this morning, including Dave Baden, the Oregon Health Authority's interim director, Felisa Hagens, Cost Growth Target Advisory Committee co-chair, and also a former Oregon Health Policy Board member, and State Representative Rob Nos. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our interim OHA Director, Dave Baden.
Yeah, thanks so much, Oscar. Happy to be here today. Again, I'm Dave Baden. I use he/him pronouns. I am the interim director here at the Oregon Health Authority. If we could go to the next slide. So I just want to talk again, sort of emphasizing importance and have a quick sort of overview on the cost growth target and why Oregon has one that, you know, again, we'll dig into some details of a couple of reports that have have just been released and look forward to hearing and being part of that discussion today. So again, why does Oregon have a of a cost growth target? You know, we, as a state, as the health authority, you know, have been working on healthcare costs and affordability for a long time. You know, I have not been in Oregon a super long time, but but have come into the state and really appreciate sort of the the rich history of of really digging into underlying healthcare costs, not just from a state budget affordability, but, you know, from a patient and an individual perspective, and what what impact of growing healthcare costs and affordability have on on people. You know, obviously, a lot of the core Medicaid waiver and Medicaid work has been setting some cost growth targets that we have, as the state, were able to to meet, able to work with the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services to to sort of have a budget built around that. So there's just a lot of of work around there. And then on the cross-cost growth target for healthcare, more generally, since Senate Bill 419 Legislative Task Force was charged with identifying opportunities to limit the growth of healthcare expenditures in the state. So lots of of work there and a long way to go. And, you know, this program, I think, will is, you know, really an important part of of that that work for the state. Next slide. So I do, I do want to start with with sharing a little bit of data just around, you know, annual increase in national healthcare spending reported as a percent increase from the previous year. I'm sure it's no, you know, no surprise that healthcare costs are growing nationally and have been for some time. You know, this slide shows the increase in national healthcare spending each year as reported by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS. Each year, we're spending more than we were the year before, and this is adding up. You can see the the percentage increases, you know, year over year, throw in a various 2020 increase. You know, that with all of the federal spending on the public health emergency and including a lot of of provider relief funds, those go into a lot of why this is, you know, a big increase in in 2020. But you could you could see sort of over time, you know, thinking about it this another way of just, you know, 4.64% on top, year after year after year, leads to lots of challenges for individuals in order to to keep up with that. Next slide. You know, nationally, you know, it's projected that healthcare costs are going to continue to increase by about 5% each year through 2030. And so I just want to point out on this chart, you know, that these are that the the Y-axis here are the annual change in per capita health spending. You could see that, you know, back in a deeper history of of sort of higher rates of 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 increase, but, you know, but still, despite lots of national efforts with managed care, with a whole lot of other things is that, you know, healthcare growth is still, you know, in many of those years exceeds sort of other inflation and other factors very much along the way. And so, you know, while some there were dips as we went through the 2000, we're still talking about growth, growth of, you know, four and then projected to be around 5% each year through 2030. You know, you can also see that 2020 peak here as well in per person spending that, you know, again, reflects all of the spent, the federal spending and provider relief for COVID. Next slide. So taking this, you know, from the national level to to the Oregon state-specific level, total healthcare spending in Oregon increased by more than $1 billion each year between 2016 and 2019. You know, by 2019, we are spending $5 billion more in healthcare each year than we were in 2014. So again, you could see sort of that consistent growth also happening in Oregon as well. You know, since 2013, we've increased the total of dollars spent on healthcare by 60%. You know, some of that increase clearly is because our population has grown and more people have health coverage. So, you know, obviously, some of that growth makes sense. There are more people that have healthcare coverage and and accessing health healthcare services. But Oregon's population only increased 7% in that same time period. So it's not just that there are more people that have healthcare coverage and accessing healthcare services, but something else is going on clearly to to have that 60% growth since 2013. For additional comparison, average ways wages in Oregon grew less than 22% and per per person income grew 32% over the same period. National medical inflation grew 17%. All of these growth rates are less than Oregon's total healthcare spending growth of 60%. Next slide. So what does that mean? You know, since 2000, this that increased growth translates to employees and employers paying more in healthcare premiums. You know, in Oregon, premium costs for people with commercial insurance have increased by more than 200% since the year 2000, while income has grown only 116%. For example, in 2020, an individual in Oregon with employer sponsor health insurance paid $286 for the health plan premium. By 2021, that increased to $969. If premiums had only increased as much as inflation in that time period, the monthly premium would have been $449 in 2021. Again, you could just sort of see the differences and that gap over time in increasing as compared to 2000. And again, what that means for for both, you know, employees and employers, again, having to pay more in healthcare premiums. Next slide. So I think I, you know, hinted or went in this direction. You know, the current pace of healthcare spending and the total amount we are spending means less money for state, business, and families to spend on other things, including education, food, wages, housing. You know, just means to be able to keep going with 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 daily needs. Having more of, you know, more of of someone's income, having to to be spent on healthcare premiums means less money for a lot of of different other laudable public policy purposes and purposes that I know for families and people in Oregon think and and want to spend and resource their lives with. Next slide. So there's not only that of of the not being able to spend your budget maybe ways that you want. But, you know, we know that the high healthcare costs lead to many negative impacts for people in Oregon. You know, because of high healthcare costs, people may be forced to choose between delaying needed care, which can make their underlying conditions or injuries worse, or get needed care, but then experience difficulty paying medical bills, using up savings to pay that bill, pay those bills, or experiencing medical bankruptcy. We also know these impacts are not distributed equally across people. You know, for example, in 2019, 23.8% of native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders in Oregon reported delayed medical care due to cost compared to 15.9% of of white people. National survey data found that 16% of black adults owed more than $250 in unpaid medical bills compared to 9% of Hispanic and white adults and 4% of Asian adults. I, this is another, you know, a strong example of of the differences and and the, you know, inequities underlying in the system and what that means to different groups of people around the state and around the country. That could lead to lots of unintended consequences, financial and unintended consequences, or people skipping or making making choices to to not pay for that prescription medicine because they need money to pay for food. So there are very real implications happening every day in this state and this country around the impact of high healthcare costs. With that, excited to turn over the next part of this discussion to to Felisa to go through the next section.
Great. Just checking in, I think people can hear me. So I think Dave really just outlined the need for a Costco's target and the impact of healthcare costs on Oregonians. I just want to make it a little bit personal. You know, I was talking to one of our member Wally Walls, who now is a healthcare worker himself. But after he graduated from college, he experienced not having healthcare for the very first time, and he is a diabetic. And he was hospitalized three times because he couldn't afford his healthcare and was attempting to ration his insulin. And we know that that has very dire consequences for folks. And so those healthcare costs have haunted Wally to this day, actually, and his inability to pay for his insulin, the hospitalization costs, drove him further and further into debt. And actually, he continues to pay off some of those debts to this to this day, almost 20 years later. So when we think about the consequences of high healthcare costs, there are consequences for states and consequences for individuals, and I want to make sure we're bringing that to the room, which we're going to do later today. I think we're on slide 14, Jandee. So, you know, we're going to be, we have two public meetings. This is our first one of the two. And I know, I think most people, my guess is looking at the participants on this call, know what the Costco's target is, but let's just jump in anyway. And I'm going to talk about it a little bit. Okay, so the thing I think about when I think about the Costco's target in Oregon is I feel like the Costco's target is a smart eagle. So one of the things that I love about this slide is it's got the X percentage on it, which I think is a kick in the pants because it's like I'm going to unveil something. It's already been unveiled. Surprise, our Costco's target is 3.4% per year. And the reason why we should think about it as a smart eagle, it's it's a it was a strategic reason by the committee, the previous committee, to set the 3.4% because that is also our goal in Medicaid, and it aligns with our federal program and our commitments to the federal government. It's measurable. It's very clear what that is, and so we can measure against it, and we're going to talk a lot about the measurements today. It's ambitious. I don't want anyone on this call to think that our Cost Growth and Sustainability Committee thinks that this is an easy goal to achieve. It's not. It's an ambitious goal to achieve, and we need to work hard to get there. But it's also realistic, and you can kind of see that from some of the data, definitely with the Medicaid providers. And you can see folks on the commercial side inching towards it, and we're going to hear from an insurer later today who has met it. It's time bound. We're really clear that you need to meet it year over year so that it's specific about when you're going to get there. And I think one of the things that are really important to me, that it's not just a smart goal, but it's an inclusive and it's an equitable equitable goal. It includes providers in our state. It includes insurers in our state. It includes the impacts on Oregonians, and we talk about those and think about those. But also, we want to make sure that we're measuring equity when it comes to this because the reality is is that black and brown families experience healthcare costs very differently than the white majority. They are more likely to be uninsured. They are more likely to be underinsured, and they are more likely to spend more out of pocket on their healthcare costs. So when we think about how, why, and how we are working towards that 3.4%, if we could center those families in that work, in this, we know that we'll achieve something great for our state. Next slide. So I think that Dave also walked through this a little bit. But you can see from this slide, Oregon Costco's target has been an effect. We would have exceeded it every year from 2013 to 2019. We got a little bit closer in 2019. And then, you know, some something terrible happened, so, which we'll talk about as we go on. People may remember COVID-19. People may actually be on this call with COVID right now. It just really has changed the way our our sort of lives. But I will say, as the payers and providers have really stepped up to address the continuing healthcare crisis. I also think keeping our eye on the prize, and I know that that's been a challenge, but it also, from the report, as we'll go through, is doable, and we we should continue to march forward. Next slide. This is a little infographic about what are the key components of the healthcare Costco Costco targets. So transparency is the phase we're in now. I think the first phase was really setting that sustainable target. The total cost of care approach means that we're including everything. So we look at all of the things to come up with, what whether or not we're meeting the target and what we're including in the transparency and in the report. And it's a common goal. So one of the things I think is has been really helpful in thinking about this is we haven't set different goals for different segments of the market. Now, we don't have different goals for different types of health insurers. We don't have different goals for different types of providers. We're all really marching towards one common goal together. And I think togetherness, I feel like, is a really critical part of when Oregon is successful. Next slide. So I think when you look at this slide, I feel like the overall title of it is that you can see that small differences in spending add up over time and mean very, very real and very, very big dollars. So the national per capita health expenditures are projected to grow about 4.5% until 2030. That's $19,294 per person. And if that rate had been 1% lower over time period, the per capita spending would be $1,770 lower. And so I, you know, I think about what a family can do with $1,000. And I I talked to a lot of, or almost $2,000. And one of the, one of my privileges is to be able to work for families who make, you know, many of them make less than $40,000 a year in my job. And so when I think about $1,000 and I think about, you know, I know this is not their $1,000. I get that this is overall spending $1,000. But $1,000 for a family is is a huge amount of money. And, you know, and it means you get to fix your car when it breaks. It means you get to pay your rent. It means that you can buy appliances when something happens. And so it's just an incredible difference. And so I think if we keep that in mind as we as we march forward. And if growth rates end up being one percentage point higher each year, our spending would rise to $21,224 per person in 2030. $21,224. If, I think some folks on this call might realize it's a good chunk of college tuition in our in our state and many states. And so I think these are some of the trade-offs that we have to sort of think through as we are as we're going forward, and that $21,224 for the state means cuts to other services. So it's about $14,000 for a kid in K through 12 education. So. Next slide. Okay, so this is a little bit about how we get here. And it is a is a growing flower of how we get here. I actually think it's been, it's been pretty slow. So I don't not want to give the impression that I, our Costco's committee, do these things. The staff at OHA does them, and they do them incredibly well. So they are first in the Costco's target. We've got to measure. We've got to look at, analyze the data. We've got to create reports, identify, and then implement strategies. So we're really in the reporting phase of this last round. And I think that there are some strategies and implementation that have that we've identified that we need to continue, but we need to continue to identify how we're going to reduce costs. And then really, we are going to move into implementation. So I'm excited today to talk through it with the folks who are providers and insurers on the panel to talk about those things. So next slide. Oh, my slides are out of order. So I feel like this slide just shows that we're not the only state with a Costco's target program. And different states have had different approaches to how they deal with costs. For example, Maryland had rate setting. But in our state, the Oregon Legislature decided on a cost growth target instead. And I really feel like the tool that the legislature decided on really fits into our other programs. So the Costco's target isn't the whole of OHA's other programs and our attempts to really make sure that Oregonians can afford their healthcare and that they have access to healthcare. You know, I think we have a value-based payment compact as one of the strategies that we are attempting to implement. You know, we are trying to align and drive measures of quality for our consistency. We aren't trying to measure and drive changes on health equity and healthcare disparities so that we can eliminate those in our healthcare system. And so there's been a lot of work that has gone on, but this fits into our strategy. And I think that you can see this strategy is growing across the nation. And I think, you know, I think it's no surprise to anybody on this call that our nation is often divided into types of states based on their political leanings. But the reality is this is a strategy that I think can fit into any type of political leaning because this is a this is not a political issue, a partisanship issue. This is a, this is a real life people every day, a state budget issue. Next slide. Okay, so this describes like our our path here to how we got here. So there was a bill introduced in the legislature that established hospital rate settings. I love that bill. Some people didn't. So we got Senate Bill 889. We had a task force out of that bill. The task force recommended a cost growth target. We had an implementation committee, and House Bill 2081 really established how we implement and accountability mechanisms for the cost growth target from Senate Bill 889. So you can see this has been quite a long process. And next slide. So this slide, I think, outlines a little bit more about what's in each process. And I want to say, I want to just pause for a moment here and thank all of the staff at the Oregon Health Authority who have worked on on this process, not only from this 2019 phase, but staffing the advisory committee, staffing the staffing the task force committee. The this slide doesn't do them justice for the amount of work, the reports, the analyzing, the meeting scheduling, the all of the things, the billion and one questions we have about every single area to get to these answers. And with professionalism, grace, and kindness, they have answered those questions and really brought us to this point. And they've put out an excellent report. And I think that their their commitment to Oregonians and the commitment to making sure that our committee knows the answers to what we need to give the best advice we can has been incredible. So I just want to take a minute and thank the staff for all of their great work in this slide because when you see a bulleted list, I feel like it doesn't really really tell you all of the work that's gone into this. So right now, we're, like I said, we're very much in this public reporting phase here. So 2023 to achieve our targets. And so this is going to give us a snapshot so that we can make sure that we are seeing where our challenges are, looking in to where we have opportunities, learning from each other before we have any accountability into the program. And I think as the program is kind of going to go along, we get to Performance Improvement Plans, PIPs, in 2025. But before that, now's our time to see what our problems are, what our challenges are, what our opportunities are. Because if we don't identify those now, if we don't shine a public light on them, then we're not going to be able to achieve the outcomes that we need to achieve. And that's really what this first public meeting is about, right? How do we put a light on this? How do we put a spotlight on this? And then that way, we can come together and sort of brainstorm where we go from here. Next slide. So I think that today is really an information sharing opportunity. And so we're going to talk a little bit about I think that today is really an information information sharing opportunity. Um and so we're going to talk a little bit about where we are related to the cost growth target and our performance overall. But uh it's just the first of many steps that we're going to have to take over the over the years together to achieve the goals that we want. Uh next slide. So I'm going to hand it over to Bill.
Thanks very much, Felisa. I'm Bill Kramer, a member of the Oregon Health Policy Board, and I serve as the board's liaison to the Cost Growth Target Program. I'll be introducing two individuals who will describe the impact of high healthcare costs on patients and consumers. Uh as you know, many times discussions of healthcare costs uh tend to focus on the statistics, the technical issues. Um we need to remind ourselves uh that these costs affect all of us as patients and consumers, and we need to hear the stories of the the impact of these high healthcare costs. So before we get into the uh presentation of the report, a discussion of the statistics, the the trends and the drivers of cost growth, uh it's important to focus on why we are doing this and why healthcare affordability is such a concern for people in Oregon. Just to introduce this, provide an overview. Uh we know that healthcare is increasingly affordable, unaffordable, and how is this affecting patients and consumers? Uh next slide, please. Uh next slide. Uh we know that one in four adults nationally is worried about being able to afford an unexpected medical bill. Uh we know that medical bills are the second biggest worry for people after gas prices and more than it's a greater uh concern than housing, food or utilities. Next slide. Uh three out of four adults uh without health insurance worry about being able to pay for medical bills. But even forty-one percent of adults with health insurance worry about paying medical bills. I'll also mention that healthcare is increasingly unaffordable for employers, especially small businesses and not for profits. Uh the percentage of small and mid-sized employers that are able to offer health benefits has declined from eighty percent in twenty-ten to sixty-seven percent in twenty-twenty-two. And the percentage for very small employers, those with three to nine employees, has declined from sixty percent to thirty-nine percent in twenty-ten. Next slide, please. Uh ten percent of people in Oregon report using up all or most of their savings on medical bills. And we can see from this, as Dave mentioned, that there are serious disparities. People who report that they were identified as uh two or more races are twice as likely to use up their savings on medical bills as white people in Oregon. Next slide, please. Um three percent of people in Oregon reported they were not able to pay for food, heat or rent because of medical bills. That may not seem like a large percentage, but that's over a hundred thousand Oregonians not able to pay for food, heat or rent because of high healthcare costs. And five percent of people reported taking on credit card debt because of medical bills. It's a hundred and seventy-three thousand Oregonians. Uh next slide, please. But enough of the overview of this problem. Um let's move to our panelists. Uh our first speaker is Josefina Riggs. Uh she is a personal support worker in central Oregon. She has volunteered with a number of organizations, including Ken Start and the Cascade AIDS Project. And she's currently a vice vice chair of the Oregon Commission on Hispanic Affairs. She isn't able to be here in person today, but she sent a video message. So we're going to start with that.
My name is Josefina Riggs. I live in Redmond, central Oregon. I am sixty-five years old. My work is B S W. I work with kids with special needs. I have two customers now. In two thousand twenty-one, I was diagnosed with cancer, breast cancer, when I didn't my regular mammogram. When I was diagnosed, it was in April two thousand twenty-one. I didn't have health insurance in that time because I don't have enough hours to pay the insurance. I started working in September two thousand twenty with only one client. And apply for the insurance in July two thousand twenty-one, that mean after I was diagnosed with breast cancer. That was April two thousand twenty-one. I don't have any anymore. No, I don't have enough hour to claim the insurance. That's the reason I claimed in July two thousand one. Um I took another client in September two thousand twenty-one after I have all the tests, MRI, prescription, anesthesiology, X-ray, surgery. That was a debt around the ten thousand dollars. When I take two my second client, I use that money only to pay the medical bills. I got it for all that procedures. And it's uh the same I told you before was around ten thousand dollars. I make a um uh plan, plan to pay the bills with the difference organization because no was only one. And I pay off with taking the other second job. And you know, after COVID two thousand twenty, I lose my job, my husband lose his job, and he is retired and he's a veteran as well. And I asked for help to the uh hospital that made uh I can uh have um benefits to pay the bills. And they pardon the surgery and the radiotherapy. But I need to pay all the others bill. And it's now after I went when we this finish with the surgery, I need to have two shots a year. That shot is uh infusion, they call infusion, it's calcium um injections. And the first one was the July, the last year. And the second one was in beginning of this year. That mean the first one was around three thousand dollars, but because that included not only the infusion, they called the doctor busy, they call they included blood test and different things. And the total of that um bill was three thousand dollars. And I start making payments for that first three thousand dollars. And I have the second shot in January, that mean that added another three thousand dollars. And I re- start the arrangement to pay. And it's around one hundred eighty-eight dollars a month. And they told me I going to be free for that two uh shots in five years. But in July, I'm going to have another infusion shot. And uh that is going to be two shots every year for five years. That mean I think I going to pay off this when I was ninety years old. And you know, we have, I have the groceries, the regular bills, the car insurance, the loan payment. I need to play with the credit cards, pay one thing because this month I don't have enough for the other payments. And that that is crazy. I don't have a quality of life. Uh if I go to a restaurant, I feel guilty. And that's, that is not okay. The somebody to my age and my health condition living that way because we have a pile of bill. Thank you for let me speech and I hope they my testimony um help everybody to understand that is not a joke. That is our life. Thank you.
Uh I think all of us are grateful to Josefina for sharing her story. Uh and uh too many of our members of our communities like Josefina suffer from these uh uh high costs of of healthcare. Our our second panelist is Michelle Rears. Uh let me introduce her and she can uh describe her um her background and her situation. Michelle.
Yes, hi, morning. Thank you for having me. Um so I'm Michelle Rears and I I currently live in Benton County. Uh I've been here, I believe, five or six years now. Uh in the summer of two thousand nineteen, we 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 purchased a a business here uh in 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 the area. And I was awaiting a trip to go to Asia with my son. And we had a lot of things in our future that we wanted to do, including expanding the business, buying a home here and um going back to school. I had graduated from OSU um with an honors bachelor and was looking maybe going for my masters or PhD. And all that changed. Uh COVID changed many things for many people. But um it it really changed it for me. So in twenty twenty, I contacted COVID without realizing it. Oh, give me one second. My computer is going off or something. Sorry, technical difficulty should be taken care of. Sorry. Um I contacted COVID but did not know it. Uh it was not what everybody had said it was going to be. I was afraid of contacting it because I'd had some illness that had weakened my system. I had three days of flu like symptoms, um fever, um achy, that was it. No, it wasn't. I spent over two and a half years um battling what is now recognized as long COVID. It included respiratory uh issues, heart palpitations and pain, chest pains, um feeling the did uh dizziness, muscle weakness, and things just kept going on and on. Um I ended up at the doctor, urgent care or E R, including surgeries during the three-year period that included breathing problems, heart and chest pains, headaches, a lump in my head that was caused by the, pretty sure by the first uh thought the vaccine and incredible headaches. So I went for MRIs. I've had chronic uh pain, dehydration, IVs, muscle uh uh injuries out of nowhere. This went on and on. I went three K Gs, MRIs. Next, right? Guess what? I'm healthy. Not one of these tests really showed other than a couple of things that came up like the 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 cancer. I'm a healthy person. I keep giving these doctors all these symptoms and dollar after dollar goes out of my pocket. Um all these, I'm I'm on waiting for to meet my deductible. Money keeps going out. April of twenty-two, things got worse. One of two genetic conditions apparently exacerbated by long COVID took hold. I never even heard of it. It's called Malde DeBark syndrome. I had minor symptoms and didn't know it. I don't know if you can imagine living on a boat every second of every day of your life. And sometimes you act that nice way. Other times you're on a fast storm. Um it made my life impossible. I often couldn't walk. My speech became slurred. My customers were looking at me as if I had been drinking before work. Nobody knew what was going on. I had to quit playing my job that that we bought our business and go home. Uh it made it very difficult to take care of myself. Uh taking care of my apartment, cleaning up after myself, it hurt. Um I get dizzy. Um in the long run, I spent thousands of dollars out of my own pocket for rehabilitation, physical therapy to try to stop this motion. My health kept decreasing and decreasing. At some point I realized that my old apartment was smelling and there was mold. And we moved me to my daughter's apartment for five weeks. And I had to continue to pay rent, but my health went up. Apparently I've got mold toxicity on top of this. In this time also, I'd had my gallbladder removed and I've had cancer surgery on my face three years. That's a lot to go through. The financial strain is incredible. The mental strain, the strain on my relationship. I borrowed money for a deposit for my new apartment. I lost my deposit on the old one because it wasn't clean sufficiently and were traces of mold. I have to pay for a more expensive apartment. Halloween of twenty-two, I got COVID once more. That was it. We closed our business. I couldn't work. This business was everything. My husband caught COVID as well, and he could no longer physically take on the work that he had been for the two of us. I'm working now at home on the phone, some on the computer at an order by order basis. This business was our future. It's our first retirement. What little money we had had gone into this from the sale of our home. Over a three-year period from the time I caught COVID to now, I have spent over twenty thousand dollars. I thought I was sollicit until I added it up for this. It was all my savings once. Nine thousand, seven hundred, seventy dollars and thirty-one cents were just on my insurance deductible. Over three years for our family. There's two of us. The other nine thousand plus were co-pays and out of pocket expenses. This didn't include hundreds or thousands for prescriptions, mileage, over the counter stuff. At one point, for almost two years, I was paying eight hundred or more dollars a month solely for medical expenses. I couldn't afford to do this. I couldn't think straight because of the illness and all I know is I had this bills. And I had student loans that were getting ready to come due. Every three months I was told, oh, your student loans are coming back. Your student loans are coming back. So I tried to pay everything off. I'm out of money. My credit cards are maxed out. And the collection costs have started. My student loans start next month. Hmm. I had dreams of finishing my education and buying a new home. Now I'm fifty-four. I have no retirement. All our expenses are being put on credit cards because we can't afford our monthlys. And because we own a business, we don't qualify for SNAP or any kind of help. Still have to pay the deductibles for Oregon healthcare. They've gone down. But not enough. Let me tell you. Nobody chooses to go into debt like this. And I can't. Our only option is to help people. Right now, I don't care what my symptoms are. The standing rule is I can't go to the doctor. I continue to battle ongoing conditions. But because every time I go, I don't get any answer. Um and and as many people did for long COVID, they were looked at as if they were crazy. This this destroyed my life over the last three years. And now I'm at the bottom. And I'm here to speak for everybody. Our only option to avoid some of these costs will let our health worsen or not seek treatment. Our healthcare needs and costs are out of control. And yet all this is controlling my life, my ability to work, take care of my family, to be without stress and fear of losing my home. As costs continue to soar, my rent goes up this month. You know what? I still have a home and I have family. And there are so many people that don't. We need to lower these healthcare costs. We can't. This is not living. And I'm here just because anything I say today is not going to change anything for me. Really, honestly, not today, not tomorrow. But I can talk. Have this opportunity to put a voice out there, not just for me, but for other Oregonians, especially those who have already lost their home. So much more. Thank you for your time.
And and thank you.
And thank you, Michelle. You've clearly been through a very difficult time. Our hearts go out to all of you. And to you and your entire family for what you've been through. And thank you so much for sharing your story today. It must have been very difficult to even describe it all over again and relive it. We really appreciate your sharing it because it, you and thousands of other of our fellow Oregonians face health problems, but the financial problems that come with it and the personal challenges that you face. So thank you so much again for sharing it. It reminds us of the importance of this work and the importance of our work going forward to try to get control over spending growth on healthcare in Oregon. Thank you again.
Thank you for everything you guys did. Thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, for our next agenda item, I'm going to pass this on to Peter Davidson, who is the co-chair of the Cost Growth Target Advisory Committee. Peter?
Good morning, Michelle and Josefina. Thank you so much for sharing your stories. It's very difficult in this format to do that and very, very important. It's really critical. We understand the purpose of this work and the impact of the cost growth targets and the potential impact of cost growth targets on Oregonians as we go forward. You know, the cost growth target is all about sustainability of this work over time. And as Felisa mentioned, we're in the report phase of process here. And it's really good that we have data from two thousand and eighteen all the way through twenty-one so that we pick up some of the variation in care delivered during the pandemic. And we can start to get our hands around not only what the annual trends are and what causes some of that variation, but start thinking more about the sustainability of this work over time and how we succeed in helping real people with their healthcare costs. Next slide, please. So we're now going to turn to actually some slides with lots of numbers. I'm an accountant by training, so I like this process of deep dive into the findings. In, in May, we had two reports published, one for two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty. It has data about providers and payers, but that's blinded. In, in the two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one report, which just came out, there is specific data on individual providers and payers so that we can start to create a discussion. And we'll hear later from the panel of some of those providers that are named. You know, I'm going to provide a little bit of orientation on the two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty report. And then Sarah will be kind enough to walk us through the two thousand twenty-three report. I'd like to echo Felisa's comments about the OHA staff and the development of these reports. They're extraordinarily comprehensive. They give us a baseline to start our work and to start thinking about the real challenges within the complexity of the healthcare system and how you achieve sustainable trend over time. So I think this is a good start. We have an awful lot of work ahead of us. Next slide, please. So these reports use a couple of measures to describe the underlying healthcare spending. One is total healthcare expenditures, and of course, there's an acronym with it. You're not required to remember that. But total healthcare expenditures includes all healthcare claims and non-claims-based payments made between the health plan and a provider. Non-claims payments include things like paying, prepaying from a health plan to a provider for future services. It's often called capitation. It also includes incentives for quality results that happen at the provider. So there are claims and non-claims. We think of that as total medical expenses. In the total healthcare expenses, we also have the net cost of private health insurance. And we'll talk a little bit more about, well, I think there's a slide coming up on the details of what that is. And then there's some other spending costs as well. And those include things like the VA spending and other government programs when we can capture those costs as they affect Oregonians. Next slide, please. As we look at the various reports, we're going to break them down by markets. Or in the health insurance business, we think of them as lines of business. So there's the commercial market, which includes all fully insured plans, ACA within the exchange, out of the exchange, employer-sponsored plans, and it includes some of the self-insured plans. So where you have a provider like Moda that provides, that offers both fully insured plans and self-insured plans, OHA has been able to capture that data and include it in the analysis. Where we may have a small TPA service or administrative-only service for an employer that doesn't also have comparable fully insured plans, we can't collect that data unless it's volunteered. So we have some of that, but it's not as comprehensive as the other data. We have the Medicare market, which includes both Medicare Advantage plans, those offered by private insurers within both the Oregon market, well, within the Oregon market, whether they're local, regional plans, or whether they're national plans. And it also includes the Medicare fee-for-service. We get that information from the federal government through CMS. And we think about that as traditional Medicare. On the Medicaid side, we have the coordinated care organizations as the bulk of the way that the state finances the support of the Medicaid program. And those coordinated care organizations or CCOs are required to report, and we have all their data. Additionally, the state has a Medicaid fee-for-service option or an open card option, and that data is also covered or captured in this information. So those are the three lines of businesses you go through that report. And I would really recommend, if you haven't picked up the full report, do so. It's very comprehensive. It's very understandable, and I think it paints a really good picture of both where we're starting and what the challenges are that we have. Thanks, Sarah. Next slide, please. So when we think about total healthcare costs within Oregon, not only do we think about the providers as they care for commercial and Medicare and Medicaid, we also have to think about the net cost of private health insurance. And there's an acronym for that, which is too long for me to think about. But the, the, the private health insurance costs are those associated with administering, administering a health plan like I work at, at Pacific Source. And, and the cost that we capture within these reports is the difference between what the health insurer collects in premiums and what they pay out in claims. And so those include a wide range of costs, including advertising, premium taxes. So we pay both federal government and state in that process. There are a number of other fees. And then there's margin, either profit or losses, as well as the cost of staff to support those health plans. And the NCPHI is calculated again for each line of business, commercial, Medicare and Medicaid. Next slide, please. We're going to share, I'm going to share just two slides from two thousand eighteen and twenty to set the stage for Sarah to talk about the important data from twenty to twenty-one, which is the most recent report. So next slide, please. Let's think about some of that summary plan on a per-person basis. What we saw was that in the total healthcare expenditures, again, that's claims cost, non-claims cost, health insurer costs, and then those other things like the VA went up about three point six percent. And then we saw that drop in two thousand twenty, not so surprisingly, as we did across the nation due to a lot of the constraints of getting care during COVID. So this is what we would expect to see. It's consistent with national terms. And again, I think it's one of the reasons that we need to start looking at data, both on an annual basis, but also on a systematic trend basis to figure out how we manage to the three point four percent that the Cost Growth Advisory Committee has, has set. Importantly, on this slide, we start looking at the details of how to each of the underlying lines of business impact that overall trend. So you'll see in the orange in the little box on the right, commercial from eighteen to two thousand and nineteen actually grew above the rate of the cost growth at four point five percent. And then turned around and had a negative or a decreasing per member, per month cost to one point six percent. Medicare actually met that cost growth target in two thousand eighteen to nineteen and then saw some fairly substantial decreases as our seniors stayed home and deferred care in two thousand twenty. And we'll see the, that trend impact an awful lot of the data that we're going to provide from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty, and it's no surprise. Medicaid was also interesting. It was right around that three point four percent, a little bit higher in the initial year period. In the beginning of COVID, we saw that drop very dramatically to six point three percent. So on a market basis, overall, this period of time is within the trends, but everything is dominated by the impacts of COVID, and it sort of overwhelms the underlying inflationary costs that were built into healthcare in that period of time. Next slide, please. This is a busy slide, but it's where we can start getting at how do we understand what's driving costs? And how do we understand where those necessary levers are? So this slide details total medical expenses, again, all four categories from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty. So the base period is two thousand nineteen prior to COVID. In April, a lot of the medical community was required to shut down. A lot of people deferred care because of concerns over it being out in the public. You can see that hospital, both inpatient and outpatient, on a statewide basis in the blue, on a commercial basis, a Medicare basis, and even on a Medicaid basis, dropped very substantially. In fact, the only category that had consistent increases in cost during that time is the retail pharmacy component. And obviously, that's something we're digging in deeper as we start to think about what's creating the impact of the cost and, and how do we start having an effect on overall cost increases as it relates to pharmacy? Next slide, please. I'm going to turn the slides over to Sarah to talk in some greater detail about what we're seeing in twenty and twenty-one. And I think it's just important to remember the impacts and the sort of ebbs and flows of COVID during the time periods of twenty twenty and twenty-one. And even into twenty-two, as we saw Omicron in Q one of twenty-two start to have an impact. And as we get that report next May, we'll be able to talk a little bit more in detail, both about what we see as some of the significant costs in COVID ran out. But also as, as we sort of returned to a more normalized healthcare cost structure. Sarah?
Thanks so much, Peter, for the overview and for introducing everyone to the acronyms and the measures that we're using in this report. So I'm going to jump right into the two thousand twenty, twenty-one trend data. I shared the link to the full report in the chat. You can also find a full data book for both reports with all of the numbers that are underlying this graph. We've made that available so anyone can dig in and do some exploration on their own. So all of that is also on our reports webpage. Next slide, please. So looking at two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, looking at that total healthcare expenditures measure that includes the claims, non-claims, administrative costs and other spending. In Oregon, those healthcare costs increased seven point two percent between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. This is total dollars spent in the state, not on a per member or per person per year basis. We'll get to that. But in two thousand twenty-one, we spent a little over thirty-one billion dollars on healthcare in those categories. Medicare was the bulk of that, which that's been true for a long time. Medicare is expensive and takes up a lot of that share. So Medicare was thirty-seven percent of that thirty-one billion dollars. The commercial market was twenty-nine percent, Medicaid was twenty-one percent. So we're going to say this multiple times as we go through. You'll probably be sick of it by the time I stop talking. But this increase in spending is exactly what we expected to see in this data. This is in line with what other states are seeing, what the national trend was. And it really is an artifact of the rebound of utilization. So as Peter shared, we saw that drop in utilization in two thousand twenty as people deferred care or as various units or places to receive care were closed, elective surgeries were postponed, people were avoiding various care settings for a number of reasons. But that started to come back in two thousand twenty-one. And so just from that utilization, we expected to see a rebound. And we do see that across the board, and we'll go into detail about all the ways that that's playing out. Next slide. So looking at the total healthcare expenditures measure on a per-person-per-year basis, so breaking down that thirty-one billion dollars by, divided by all the people in Oregon, healthcare costs grew three point five percent between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. So just above our target of three point four percent. If we look just at the total medical expenses, the claims and the non-claims spending are all of the payments that a health plan made to a provider. Total spending went up five point six percent. So both of these measures give us a standardized comparison of spending as the underlying population in Oregon might change or as the number of people who have coverage in a given market might change. Next slide. Medicaid is the only market in the state that met the cost growth target. So we measure performance, we measure cost growth relative to the cost growth target at four different levels. Statewide, that was the previous slide. By market, that's this slide. And then by payer and provider data, which I'll get into in a little bit. So at the market level, Medicaid was the only one to meet the target. Costs declined between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one by two point one percent. Medicare grew six and a half percent, and commercials saw the greatest increase at twelve point one percent. Want to talk a little bit about Medicaid because there was a lot happening in this time period. As many of you are probably aware, public health emergency was in effect and Medicaid redeterminations were paused. So people were not losing their Medicaid coverage. We were not seeing sort of the normal on and people getting coverage and leaving coverage or losing coverage as their eligibility changed during this period. So Medicaid enrollment went way up. So basically, our denominator went up. So on a per-person basis, spending is dropping simply because there are just more people to spread those dollars spent across. Okay, next slide. So briefly, I want to talk about those administrative costs or that net cost of private health insurance. So we know as utilization went up, more people were receiving services. Payers were, health plans were spending more. They were paying more out in dollars as people were utilizing services. And so the difference, the way this is calculated, the difference between the total health plan collects in premiums or revenue and how much they're paying out in claims shrunk. So we see about an eighteen percent drop in those administrative costs on a per-person basis between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And again, this is likely due to that increased utilization. We see that for commercial and Medicare. It is a little different on the Medicaid. It is a little different on the Medicaid side, and again, that's because more people were enrolled in Medicaid. Next slide. At a high level, I also want to talk about pharmacy rebates, so in some of our previous work with the cost growth target program. We were able to look at pharmacy spending using claims data from our all payer all claims database. Those claims data do not take pharmacy rebates into account. With our cost growth target data collection, we are able to look at that, so both of these reports go in depth about pharmacy rebates. And we can see that in Oregon statewide, about twenty three percent of all of the spending on retail pharmacy. Was returned through rebates, so return is kind of a catchall term, it could, those dollars could be going a lot of places, they could be. Um returned from the manufacturer to the health plan, from the manufacturer to a pharmacy benefit manager. Um those rebate costs may or may not be passed back to an individual member or a patient who's um using that. That prescription, um we're not, we don't know, we don't have that full data trail, um but statewide. We're getting about twenty three percent back um in two thousand twenty one. That was um about a billion dollars a year in pharmacy rebates. The majority of those pharmacy rebates are being driven by the Medicaid program, um you can see in the graph on the right. That Medicaid is getting back about sixty percent, um fifty five percent of its pharmacy spending. In rebates, and that is because of some state and federal regulations that ensure that Medicaid gets the best price. Um so rebates, this is again very expected, this is how we expected to see it play out. Commercial and Medicare rebates are a little lower, around twenty twentyish percent each year. So as we talk about the rest of our spending and a lot of the data that I'm about to share. We are going to be, there's a category called retail pharmacy, so that's uh prescriptions picked up in a retail setting. As opposed to medical pharmacy, which is like when you're in the hospital and a physician administers a drug um to you under supervision, that's medical pharmacy. We're not talking about that, we're talking about pharmacy, sort of uh you go to the pharmacy counter and pick up a prescription. We are going to report on that net of rebates, so we are going to take out those rebates, we're going to subtract the rebates from the total before we report pharmacy growth. So just a little bit of walking us there, but um you'll see on the next slides, we say retail pharmacy parentheses net. And that means that we've taken those rebates into account. Next slide. I'm going to keep sharing a little bit of data at the state level, we're going to talk about cost growth drivers. So what is happening, what is behind some of that overall market level growth? Next slide. And to give everybody a little bit of orientation to the next four charts, um these are bubble charts, our cost growth driver charts. Um if you listen to some of our previous meetings, we've shared data in this way before, but let me summarize for you, so. If you read these graphs from left to right, um the farther to the right you go. That means that there was higher percentage cost growth, so the closer you get to the right side of the screen, um the larger that growth was. From top to bottom, that's on a per person per year basis, how much we were spending in dollars. So the closer you are to the top of the graph, the more expensive or the more money we are spending on that category. And then the size of the bubble, so the larger the circle is, the more that category contributed to the overall growth. So this is letting us triangulate a lot of different things, so the farther right, mo- most growth. The higher to the top, the most expensive, and the larger circle, the most they contributed. And the reason we break the data down like this is because there can be services that are really expensive, so. For example, inpatient hospital costs tend to be higher on a per person basis um for a number of reasons. And so we would expect, and generally we see inpatient bubbles are higher, they're closer to the top of the chart. But they're not always growing the fastest, um sometimes other service categories are growing much faster, and so we want to make sure that we're taking into account. Both of those effects. Okay, next slide. So this is on a statewide basis. Um so again, referencing back to a couple slides ago, our total expenses increased five point six percent, that's the total medical expenses measure. Um per person per year. Um and that was primarily driven by increases in hospital outpatient, that's the orange bubble. And by professional services, that's the light blue bubble, you can see that they're both um. Close to the top, large circles and farther to the right. So for me, when I look at this, both of these bubbles, professional outpatient services, they're really outpatient settings, they're. Professional services are like going to see your primary care doctor, um they're going to see a specialist for consult. Outpatient are um outpatient clinics that are part of a larger hospital system, so really a lot of this is that utilization coming back. People were having sort of regular care appointments, and that's where we would expect to see it captured in the professional and outpatient services. You can see inpatient services in the dark blue bubble, um it's one of the more expensive categories, it's. Um you know, up there, but it's not growing as fast statewide retail pharmacy, also not growing um as fast as professional and outpatient. But let's start looking at this data and breaking it apart by market, because there's a really different story for each of the markets. Next slide. So in the commercial market, professional and outpatient services again had the highest cost and the most growth. Professional services far to the right, um almost twenty percent growth there, um and outpatient services um really close behind. Next slide. We see a similar story for the Medicare Advantage market, um outpatient services growing the most around seventeen percent there. Followed by professional services, you'll see it here that inpatient costs are higher on the screen. Um inpatient costs for the Medicare Medicare Advantage population are more are higher on a per person basis. Um and again, this checks out with everything we know, we just sort of spend more per person. Per year for people with Medicare coverage than we do in the other markets. And then finally, last slide, the Medicaid market is a really different story. Um on a per person per year basis, um retail pharmacy is by far the biggest cost growth driver, it's way over there, twelve percent. And you can see that most of the other service categories are um. Hollow hollow circles, and that means that there was negative cost growth or cost growth declines. Again, because we measure this on a per person per year basis, and there were more people enrolled in Medicaid. We're spreading those dollars out over more people, so per person per year goes down. All right, and I want to dig in just a little bit more to that professional services and show you what that looks like um in more detail, next slide. So again, as I said, professional services are things like going to see your primary care doctor, um going to see a specialist. Those doctor, those sort of traditional doctors visits. Statewide, those services grew by ten percent. Um but we collect the data with a little bit more granularity, and so for commercial Medicare Advantage and Medicaid. We can see what kinds of professional services were growing and how that was changing. So between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, you can see that there were particularly large increases in commercial and Medicare Advantage. For primary care and behavioral health, um there's a almost thirty one percent growth in commercial behavioral health. And a fifty three percent growth in Medicare Advantage Behavioral Health. So one thing that I say a lot is um not all cost growth is bad, and there are places where we absolutely want to see. Um resources being directed, we know that maybe um they've been underfunded or. Rates are lower and we've been not paying enough and we want to see increases, and for me, this slide really summarizes um. Growth in primary care and behavioral health. Even if this is mostly because people were accessing care when they didn't in two thousand twenty, and now they are again in two thousand twenty one, this is the kind of spending we want to see. Oregon has a primary care spending target. We measure our primary care spending and we hope to see those dollars increase. A number of other states also have behavioral health spending targets and they want to see specific increases there, so. This is something where we would say, you know, what happened here and hope maybe our panel later can talk a little bit about behavioral health and. What that looks like from their perspectives, but um these kinds of increases as people maybe access more behavioral healthcare. Um due to the pandemic, um as telehealth for behavioral health services became more available, um maybe more people access that. Those are exactly the kinds of things that we would hope to see across the system. I'm going to pause there really quickly, I know we're doing okay on time. Are there any questions that people want to throw in the chat about any of the data so far before we go to the payer level data? Okay, I'm not seeing anything, let's go the next slide, please. And the next slide. Okay, so we are going to talk about payers or health plans or health or carriers, um whichever way you want to call them, we call them payers. Um so for the cost for the target program, we include all payers and third party administrators. That have at least a thousand members in Oregon. Those payers and TPAs need to submit data if they have at least a thousand members in Oregon. We then have a new uh second threshold um that of at least five thousand members. Before we include anyone in public reporting, so for anyone, any payers who have between a thousand and. Four thousand nine hundred and ninety nine members, we roll those up into the statewide total. But for all of those payers with at least five thousand members in a specific market, um. We have, um there are twenty nine payers in Oregon that met that threshold and are included in this report. Um and they break down by market because not all payers offer all lines of business and not all payers meet that threshold for reporting in each line of business. So we have nine commercial payers, sixteen Medicaid payers, and ten Medicare Advantage payers. Next slide. If we look just at cost growth for payers, overall cost growth was four point seven percent. Um that's statewide rolled up, but if we look at it by market, it again, we see that spread, so for commercial payers, cost growth went up eleven and a half percent. For Medicare Advantage payers, it went up six percent, and for Medicaid, it dropped by three percent. And you can see in the graph on this slide, this is just a quick distribution of where everyone was relative to the cost growth target. Um you can see most of the commercial and Medicare Advantage uh dots, the red and the orange dots are in that not met category, sort of on top of the. Cost growth line, and you can see the majority of the Medicaid payers are below the target, um they came in. They came in under three point four percent. Of the twenty nine payers, eleven met the cost growth target in at least one market, although. For almost everyone, that was just for Medicaid, but there was an exception I will talk about in a second. Next slide. So on that graph I just showed, we had a middle category that was indeterminate, so one thing that we have adopted in Oregon's program. Is that we are only reporting payer and provider cost growth, we're only going to say payers and providers met or did not meet the target. If we can say that with statistical certainty. So for each payer and provider organization performance, we calculate the ninety fifth percent confidence interval. Um and we show that, so in each of the graphs that we're about to show, um there is a little gray bar um on the graph. Surrounding the the dots, the dot is the cost growth, the gray bars are the confidence intervals. And at a really high level way this works, um if those gray bars, if the confidence intervals overlap three point four percent. That means we cannot say with certainty that that payer or provider met or did not meet the target, so we're still going to report the data. We're just going to call them indeterminate, so you'll see a number of um. Uh payers and providers on the next set of slides that are listed as indeterminate, and that means that while we know what their cost growth was, we're not going to say for sure. Whether or not it was above or below the target, and there are a number of factors that go into that, um but really, this is a control for smaller. Um smaller population, so the larger a payer or provider is, the narrower or the shorter their confidence intervals will be. And the more confidence we have that we know what their cost growth was. So while none of the data in this report is um going to result in any payers or provider organizations. Being held accountable or put on a performance improvement plan, as we were talking earlier in the meeting about that phase in. Um in that longer timeline that comes in two thousand twenty five, um. For the record, a payer or provider must fail to meet the target, they must exceed the target with statistical certainty before they would be held accountable. So just for context, if you're seeing any payer provider performance here and it's indeterminate, um no accountability would apply if that was the case in future years. So we're going to see each graph lists payers and providers in different groups, um and I'll talk about those groupings in a second, they're listed alphabetically. Um and then we'll show their cost growth above or below the target, um and the line on each is the three point four percent target and where they are. So hopefully that all tracks for you all. All right, let's dig into the market, so the next slide is looking at cost growth for payers. Um in the commercial market, so cost growth in the commercial market ranged a lot, um. It ranged from three point zero percent to twenty one and a half percent. Um and the average cost growth, as we said before, for commercial payers was eleven and a half percent, so pretty much everyone well above the target here. No commercial payers met the cost growth target. One payer was indeterminate, and seven exceeded the target with statistical certainty. So you can see the one um Health Net Oregon with those overlapping bars being indeterminate. I also want to note here that we um. Expect to have Aetna data in future reports, we did not have their data finalized, um in time for publication. For this report, so Aetna data is not included, but they are a payer that meets the threshold and will be included in the future. Next slide. So now looking at cost growth for Medicare Advantage payers. Cost growth here was a little bit lower overall, it ranged from one point eight percent to ten point seven percent. One payer met the target, that's Pacific Source, clearly below the line on the left. One payer was indeterminate, that's Kaiser, and eight payers exceeded the target with statistical certainty. Next slide. And looking at the Medicaid market, so here we have all of the coordinated care organizations. As well as Medicaid fee for service, Open Card as its own payer, um. Ma- again, Medicaid cost growth looked really different, um here we have negative fourteen percent, that's Medicaid fee for service with the largest. Drop in spending, um ranging all the way to five point one percent. Ten Medicaid payers met the target and six were indeterminate. Next slide. So in our report, we include a little bit of the themes that we've heard from our conversations with payers, so. Our staff meet with all of the payers to validate the data, to discuss what's in the data, what the cost growth drivers might be. And there were three key themes that really came up of those conversations um from with payers for this time period. The first was increased utilization, as we've already talked a little bit about, we saw that people were delaying care in two thousand twenty due to covid. And two thousand twenty one result, there was just much more demand for services. Um and again, in particular behavioral health services, there was a lot of increased need and increased demand for that, so we just saw more people accessing care. Payers also noted higher acuity or um essentially their members were more sick when they accessed care in twenty one, so. There could be a couple of reasons for that, so one, um if you delayed care in two thousand twenty. Uh maybe by the time you finally got care, whether that was because you finally scheduled an appointment or because you were hesitant to go into a doctor's office or to a hospital and you waited. Um maybe you were sicker and you needed more care, you needed more intensive care than you might have needed if you had seen a provider in two thousand twenty. So this led to increased um longer hospital stays to take care of people and higher costs because people had higher needs. The third theme that we heard from payers was shifting care sites. So due to um a lot of capacity issues that we've heard about in a in a number of spaces. Patients um sometimes receive care in higher cost settings. So if they couldn't get a primary care appointment, they might have gone to an urgent care setting, um which would it might have been more expensive. Uh we also know that hospitals were unable to discharge patients, there just weren't beds for them to send patients to in skilled nursing facilities or other. Um other care settings, and so maybe people stayed in the hospital longer than they might have otherwise, and so that also led to increased costs. So that's just a little bit on the payer themes. I'm gonna just keep going, um but I encourage people to add um comments and questions in the chat and we'll get to a little bit more discussion at the end. Let's go to provider organization cost growth. Next slide, one more. Okay, so for provider organizations. We include provider organizations in the cost growth target if they meet a couple of criteria. So they must include primary care provider organizations, if an organization is just a specialty. Um center, all they do is cardiology, for example, we are not including them, they're not one of our provider organizations in the cost growth target program. Uh there has to be that connection to primary care. Provider organizations also have to have at least ten thousand attributed patients total. Or at least five thousand attributed patients in any one of the markets, commercial Medicaid or Medicare. So we also roll up provider organizations to the parent level, so we are trying to look at the the overarching or sort of the largest way. The largest combination, the largest organization we can, so for example, I'm going to pick on, let's say. Um Providence, we are not looking at an individual provider who works for Providence, we are not looking at an individual. Providence Hospital or Providence Clinic, we are looking at. We are looking at Providence Health and Services, the entire system. So that includes everything in that system. So that's the roll up. With that as our criteria, we have fifty one provider organizations that we are included in this report for this measurement period. I will note that that is more than any other states are currently reporting on. Our threshold is a little different and a little more inclusive than some of the other states. Our market is also a little less consolidated than some of the other states. I want to say Massachusetts reports on maybe eleven provider organizations, don't quote me on that. So fifty one is a lot, and this gives us a lot of information about what's happening in the system. I also want to say that this can change over time. So we know that patients might change where they're receiving care, payer and provider contracts change, and so where patients are attributed might change. And we might not have fifty one organizations in future years, we might have more, we might have less, we check this every year. That fifty one provider organizations split, so there are twenty one that have patients with commercial coverage, forty six that have patients with Medicaid coverage, and twelve with Medicare Advantage coverage. We did hear a lot from payers and providers as we were putting this report together that it's really important to compare payers and providers to like organizations. So for example, pediatric clinic, pediatrician's office looks really different than a large organization that has hospitals, specialty care, and outpatient clinics. So in the next set of slides, we have grouped not only by market, but also by size and type of provider. So we're going to look at large, medium, and small provider organizations. And then we're also going to break out pediatric separately, as well as federally qualified health centers separately, just so we're providing a little bit more similar comparison because we know that the experiences are a little more similar with those groupings. Okay, next slide. I want to just provide one more detail about how patients are attributed and which sort of whose dollars are included when we talk about provider organizational level reporting. So payers, when they submit data to us, attribute their members to provider organizations based on where those members receive primary care. And we use a three tiered hierarchical attribution approach. So the first is member selection. So if you know, you as a person with health insurance have to have a primary care provider, so maybe you select that in your portal, or maybe your health plan has assigned you a primary care provider. That is where you are attributed. If you don't have member selection, or if a patient doesn't have a primary care provider on on record, payers and providers might also have contractual arrangements. So an agreement to say you are taking on a total cost of care contract for this set of patients with diabetes, for example. So all of those patients under that contract would also be attributed to that provider. And then finally, we can use utilization attribution. So if you go and see the same provider three times in a year, maybe that's your your home provider, and that's where you would be attributed. So we calculate all of a person's costs for that person regardless of where they receive care, and then we attach those costs to that provider organization. We are not able to attribute everybody. So about sixty two percent of the people that were in the payer data are attributed to provider organizations. So know that there's about thirty eight percent of people whose costs are not about to be included. We've included them in the other layers of reporting, but not at that attributed level. Also want to say a little bit of a brag, maybe that sixty two percent of attribution is is really great. Some other attribution is maybe closer to twenty or thirty percent. So we feel really good about the number of of people who we've been able to include in provider level reporting. Okay. Next slide. So overall cost growth for provider organizations for that sixty two percent of attributed lives was four point nine percent. Again, for commercial payers, it was the highest, eleven point eight percent in total. Medicare Advantage provider providers in the middle, six point three percent. And negative three point, negative three point zero percent or three point, three percentage point decline in the Medicaid market. Of the fifty one provider organizations, twenty six met the cost growth target for at least one market. You can see the clustering again here on the scatter plot on the right. On the left, not met, mostly orange and red. So that is the commercial and Medicare Advantage patients. And mostly met on the right, most is Medicaid. We're going to use that indeterminate again, and all of the graphs I'm about to show also have those same confidence interval bars. Okay, next slide. Starting with the commercial market, looking at large provider organizations. So large means that each of these organizations have more than twenty thousand attributed patients who have commercial coverage. In this group, cost growth ranged from five point one percent to sixteen percent. Overall, nine point nine percent growth. None of the organizations met the target and six exceeded the target with statistical certainty. Next slide. This is commercial cost growth for our medium sized provider organizations. These have ten thousand to twenty thousand attributed patients with commercial coverage. Cost growth here ranged from seven point nine percent to twenty one point one percent. None of these four organizations met the target and all four exceeded the target with statistical certainty. Next. Looking at our commercial cost growth for the smaller provider organizations. So these have fewer than ten thousand attributed patients. Cost growth here ranged from four point seven to fifteen point four percent. None of the organizations met the target and four exceeded the target with statistical certainty. So commercial market story looks pretty similar across the board, although there is a little bit of variation in that range and how much the cost growth was, just depending on size. And next slide. Last look at the commercial market, these are the pediatric providers. So we have four pediatric organizations with patients with commercial coverage. Cost growth here has the most variation in the commercial market. It ranged from negative two point four percent to forty nine and a half percent. None of the organizations met the target and two exceeded with statistical certainty. So the pediatric provider organization, this is a really interesting place because if you think about pediatric costs compared to adult health costs, pediatric costs, they might, there might be really high growth like we're seeing here for that forty nine and a half percent. But if you look at the dollars that are being spent, pediatric total cost of care is really not that much. Their per member per month costs are a lot lower than adult costs. So we're seeing a lot of growth, but want to put that in perspective of this is not, you know, a huge dollar impact. And these pediatric results can be really impacted by a couple of very sick kids. So some cost growth target programs are doing something that they call excluding high cost outliers. So say you have a patient who has over two hundred thousand dollars in medical bills in a given year. Some programs are saying, we're just not going to include them in our calculation. Oregon is not doing that. We include all of those high cost patients in this data. But that means that sometimes in one year, a provider organization might have a really high cost patient. Maybe that's a transplant patient, or maybe that's a kid with a really expensive cancer. So that can cause a little more bouncing in this data, and that is something that we've talked about in conversations with the provider organizations about why their cost growth might have been this high. So want to just provide a little bit more context for why we might see such range here across the pediatric organizations. Okay, and going on to the next slide and the Medicare Advantage market. So we only have a handful of organizations, provider organizations that have Medicare Advantage patients or attributed patients that meet our threshold for reporting. So they're all grouped together on one slide. Cost growth here ranges from negative zero point three percent to eighteen point nine percent. So there is quite a bit of a spread. Only one organization met the target, that's the Corvallis Clinic, and ten exceeded the target with statistical certainty. All right, and our next slide, let's go to Medicaid. So we're going to start with our federally qualified health centers. We have quite a few federally qualified health centers that have a lot of Medicaid patients, so we've grouped them together. Cost growth for this group of providers ranged from negative nine point eight percent to four point nine percent. Eleven federally qualified health centers met the cost growth target and four were indeterminate. So again, pretty big spread here, although most of the cost growth is coming in under the target. Next slide. Looking at the same, the next four slides are the small, medium, and large providers on the Medicaid side. So starting with large provider organizations. So again, at least twenty thousand patients with Medicaid coverage. Cost growth ranged from negative eleven point four percent to one point seven percent. And four of the organizations met the target. Next. Looking at our medium sized providers, so between ten thousand and twenty thousand patients, attributed patients, cost growth ranged from negative eight point five percent to six point six percent. Three of the organizations met the target, only one organization exceeded the target with statistical certainty. Next. And for our smaller provider organizations, cost growth ranged from negative fifteen percent to six point four percent. So again, seeing quite a bit of spread here. Six of the organizations met the target and one exceeded with statistical certainty. And finally, our Medicaid pediatric provider organizations. We have a few more here than we did in the commercial market, but same for in the commercial market as well. Cost growth ranged from negative thirteen percent to fifteen and a half percent. Two of the organizations met the target and four exceeded with statistical certainty. So that was a lot of data I just threw at you. I want to talk just a little bit about some of the themes that we heard in our conversations with provider organizations. So we met with many of these provider organizations to review data, talk about what was underlying the cost growth and what themes they heard or what reasons they gave explanations for their cost growth. So on the next slide, I'm going to just summarize those and then we will maybe have a little bit more of a discussion. So providers also saw the utilization increase. Non-essential services were paused, patients delayed care as patients came back. In twenty one, we saw that utilization go up. Providers also noted that increased patient acuity or that patients were sicker when they exceeded care, especially for patients with chronic conditions. Providers noted that patients with chronic conditions, if they had not been receiving care in twenty twenty, really required more complex care in twenty twenty one. Providers also noted capacity issues, especially on the hospital side. There were workforce challenges and we'll probably hear more about that in our next panel. So there were more patients, there were fewer staff to provide care, and they weren't always able to move patients between settings or get them in when they needed appointments where they needed, when they needed to. Workforce and staffing challenges are a big issue and will continue to be an issue that we see as in future years. Organizations told us that they struggle to recruit and retain staff. Staffing costs also increased. So for example, hospital, a number of hospitals talked about needing to bring on travel nurses or contract with temporary staffing agencies to be able to provide care to patients. So we expect those staffing issues will continue to contribute to higher cost growth in the future. Some providers highlighted the increased need for behavioral health services as well as investments made in that area. So thinking back again to that, those bubble charts and the cost growth drivers and the increase in professional behavioral health, providers certainly reflected that on their side. They also highlighted a need for inpatient behavioral health services and psychiatric crisis units. And then finally, provider organizations talked to us a lot about the need to put all of this cost growth and this whole report, this whole measurement period into context. So not only do we have things like those high cost outliers, like that one very expensive patient example that I talked about a few minutes ago, but also that patient populations are different. So the way, the kinds of patient populations that one organization sees might be really different from another. There might also be regional variations in payers and providers in terms of the patients they're seeing, in terms of who they're contracting with. And just making sure that we're reflecting as much of that context in the report and in this conversation as we can. So one thing we did to help with that was provide those groupings, just to put organizations that were a little more similar together. But we think that that's going to be an important part of the conversation, especially as we hear from more payers and providers in September. So I am going to stop there and see if there are any questions or comments. Peter, do you want to facilitate anything here?
You know, I would just call out the complexity of the information you just provided. You know, well, it's, there are a lot of numbers. There are a lot of variables, the macroeconomic issues as well as the issues of a group, you know, your example is 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 a great one, a group which might have a very, very high cost preemie that impacts the data, but it's hard to see in this format. So how do you get underneath some of these numbers? At the end of the day, this level of complexity and the ability to start to understand what's driving costs is what it's going to take for us to really impact the system. So I really think it's worth, again, I'm going to plug, if you haven't read the report, go read the reports, they're they're very helpful. And I think the staff is very open to talking about that last bullet point on, you know, setting some context around these issues. We as a committee, the staff at OHA really do understand that there are an awful lot of things outside of individual provider or payers control that impact these numbers. Let's be transparent about them. And let's recognize we still have to get at what's driving the costs that's impacting members like Michelle and Josefina.
There's one comment in the chat that I want to reflect on for a second. Mimi shares that it's interesting to see the growth in behavioral health professional services for Medicare since the benefit is pretty outdated and the workforce has suffered so much. And I want to, I probably should have said this in my my, somewhere in my slides. The benefits are different. What Medicare, Medicaid, and commercial payers are covering and what's included in each market's cost is different, absolutely. So want to reflect that when we go across market like that, the benefits are not comparable. So we are, for example, the Medicaid spending includes the Medicaid behavioral health, the Medicaid dental spending, where it may not as much. Most commercial plans don't have dental coverage, we're not including standalone dental plans. So there there is a difference in what benefits are covering. And so just reflecting on that, that we're trying to, it's not like we have one standardized benefit and we're measuring it on a market basket to see the price increases. We've done that in some other reports and we can talk about that, and that's a pretty cool way to look at healthcare spending and healthcare prices. But overall, when we look at this big picture, there are differences by market, and that's absolutely relevant and part of that context that matters. Committee members, any comments, any questions? Lawrence, you came off, you came on video, I see you.
Now, I just wanted to echo what Peter said. First of all, tremendous job to the staff on producing this. And then the complexity of this data, particularly when we look between twenty, the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one because of the initial shutdown of of a lot of services related to the pandemic. But it provides us a good foundation moving forward. So so I just thought that was great, great commentary.
Thank you. Other committee members. Board members, anyone want to reflect? Otherwise, I think I have one more maybe request or sort of call for comments. And I think one thing that as staff, we're really hoping to hear from people that are listening to this hearing today is what do you want to know more about? Given this data that we've shared, which payers and providers might you want to talk to? Which of these perspectives or themes might you want to hear more about in September? As we think about putting together our September agenda and how, which panelists we want to hear from and how we focus and frame that conversation, we'd really love to hear from you about sort of where you want us to dig deeper. So any comments or feedback people have on that would be very helpful. Peter, if nobody has anything else, I think you could take us to break early.
Yeah, you bet. Let's take a break. Why don't we start at five after the top of the hour? And when we come back, we're going to hear Felice is going to kick off a panel discussion with both payers and With both payers and providers. So, that should be very interesting. So, we'll see in ten.
And starting.
Hi, I think we're gathered. I'm going to do a little bit of a logistical check here as we come back together that I think they make. That might be helpful for the panel. So, if folks are willing to, if we could actually take down the slides. If the panelists could turn on their video. And if, if people feel comfortable, you could switch your view to hide non-video participants. And then what will happen when you do that is, I think Melissa, Jeremy and I will pop up. So, I think that that might be helpful and facilitating a little bit of a discussion. So we're not like tiny on the screen and you can see. People's facial reactions. I know Scott may not be participating today. He unfortunately had something come up last minute and so. Was not able to make it. He's off being a good caregiver. So. I just want to thank everybody for participating in this panel and I'd like to kick it off with some introductions. So, why don't we start with Melissa Dan from Providence Health Systems? If you could. Tell, talk about what you do for Providence, who you are a little bit. And I think, just as an intro question, why don't we try to, what is the thing that you're liking most about your job today?
Sure, thanks, Lisa. I'm Melissa Dom. I go by the pronoun she/her. And I serve as a member, I serve as a member of the cost growth target advisory committee. And I'm the chief financial officer for Providence's central division, which includes Oregon. And prior to my current role, I was the chief financial officer for Providence Medical Group. So that often helps my perspective on the program. Gosh, the thing I like the most right now about my role is we're just having new and innovative conversations post-pandemic about. You know, kind of the macroeconomic factors that have changed our communities, also. How we respond and think about serving our communities in new and different ways. And I think with any kind of challenge or change. It pushes us to do that in our lives. And that's a big piece of my role right now that is, that's exciting to be a part of.
I'll jump in. I'm Jeremy Aganam, the Oregon market president for Pacific Source Health Plans, which is a new position. I've been on board for about seven months. And my role is really sort of all things strategy for the organization for, for our various lines of business within. Within Oregon, we serve about five hundred thousand Oregonians across Medicaid, Medicare and commercial lines of business. I would say the thing that I'm most enjoying about my job is probably twofold. One, just getting to get back out in the community, meet with employers, brokers, providers. It's just nice to kind of get out, get out of this home, home office environment and be out talking to folks and making those in-person connections. I'd say the second piece is, for folks who don't know, we have a new CEO that came on board a couple of months ago. Comes from Washington. It's just been great to have something similar to Melissa, sort of. Some macro conversations around where we've been as a state, where we're going. And it's fun to be able to get to brag to him about the whole stuff that has been going on in the state of Oregon.
Well, I want to thank you both so much for agreeing to be on this discussion. And I want, first of all, I want to just kick it off with. Sort of setting a little bit of context that we, I want this really to be, I can ask some questions to help move us along, but I really want this to be a discussion. You should feel free to ask each other questions. You should throw questions out to the group so we can add them to the chat. We should. Have it be really an open discussion. I think the other thing is, I want to provide a little bit of context that both Jeremy and Melissa. Saw the report when it was released and may have been part of the conversations. Leading up to this internally in their system, but didn't see the comparisons until boom, it comes out. So. Our expectations should be around, this is a conversation about transparency and initial thoughts on the report and all of this. And that I'm not going to ask you specifically about. How are we going to solve this? What's happening? Like, this is really a, this is much more of an open intake and general thoughts. The other thing I want to say is I appreciate you both being here and, and in this space from your perspective organizations. And that there's not something here that I feel like you're going to, that you shouldn't feel like you say or do in this setting that I'm, that someone should come back and be like, remember in twenty. Twenty-three on March seventeenth that you said this and why aren't you doing that? That's not this conversation at all. I want this to be a much more free flowing, just like general reactions to the report. Does that sound good to both of you?
Sounds great.
Great. So, I, I actually thought I'd take us back in time a little bit because you were both, you had different roles at the time in twenty nineteen. And, you know, the sustainable cost growth program, you know, had just first passed and come out. And so. Let's just get your take on, kind of if you could think back into that moment, this is pre-pandemic. Sort of organizationally, what were you all thinking? What were you thinking as individuals and, and sort of what was your overall sort of reaction to the cost, to the establishment of the cost growth program? Let me start with Jeremy.
Great. Well, I think as, as most folks know, I was pretty involved in getting this thing off the ground with. A ton of help of a great team that have been kind of living and breathing this for a number of years. I was actually thinking. How exciting it is to see the report come out because it's been sort of six years in the making. And. I've sort of felt like for a long time, it was a bit of a trust exercise, like. Whether we meet the target or not, this data is going to be really important. And I think you can start to see how important it is. And I think it's going to have us ask questions that we hadn't. Probably asked ourselves before about how we're doing and what that means and why our trends are similar or different to others. Back in, back in twenty nineteen, you know, I think I was, I can't really speak for the organization because I wasn't here. But I can say that, you know, we were just seeing continued rapid cost growth, you know, in the seven, eight percent range. We were seeing at the time, pretty, pretty decent financial margins, clearly of the hospitals before, before the pandemic hit. And so, you know, none of us were expecting what happened the last few years, right? So at that point, it was just, hey, we got this trend that's going up and we got to figure out how to bend, how to bend the cost curve. And, and, and there doesn't seem to be one silver bullet to figure out how to do that. And so. You know, really hope this program would be a way to drive conversations and to drive conversations between payers and providers in particular, to figure out how they collectively bend that, bend that target. And then, and then the pandemic hit. And I don't know if you want me to go into twenty twenty or just keep my head in twenty nineteen.
Is it possible not to think about twenty twenty? I feel like have we all, have we moved on? I'm not ready.
You know, I, I feel like going back and looking at this report is like, maybe traumatically, like going back in time. Like you're literally looking back at what was going on in the healthcare system in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And you can see it in the data, right? You can see, you can see the shifts from inpatient to outpatient because we were pushing folks away from the hospital to free up beds. And you can see, you can kind of take yourself back to those moments in time, which I think a lot of us have tried to put out of, out of our, our heads a bit. But, you know, one thing I'll say about the data and then maybe shut up is, either looking at it, it's fascinating, but I feel like it's also like. Binge watching the first season of a show on Netflix. Like you know, there's a second season and a third season and this whole story is not there. And we just binge watched season one and now we have to wait a year to get season two and see what the next chapter of, you know, the pandemic looked like.
Yeah, that's a great analogy. Melissa, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think, when I think back to twenty nineteen and not being directly involved in the cost growth work, but adjacent. You know, a lot of discussion to focus on the technical pieces, right? Being a finance person, it's all about kind of the technical and. The data and the information, how it's being looked at. And we want to make sure, you know, that it's achievable to provide it. That it's understandable and actionable. Those are always kind of just the technical pieces. I also think back to twenty nineteen. And maybe I should also say like, Providence has always been and continues to be a supporter of the cost growth program, you know. We've been a part of doing work to minimize cost increases, you know, and, you know, really focused in partnership with the health plan. I'm on the delivery side, but with the health plan on how we, you know, really work to. Reduce costs and look at reimbursement, take a look at value. That's just part of the DNA of our organization being, you know, an integrated delivery and health system. When I think about, also when I think about twenty nineteen, I recall being in front of, you know, a thousand of our leaders. And talking about medical costs, talking about impact to our patients. And with those managers, with our core leaders, talking about, it's really all of our accountability to understand, not just that we're providing. Care, that we're providing quality care, that, you know, we're meeting our community's needs and focusing, you know, on. All of the patients that we serve, but also understanding the implications of the cost and the medical expense related to that. So when I think about the stories we heard today. It drives me back to that being in that meeting, in those meetings and talking about. Really understanding, understanding that from a business lens and our, our need to focus on that, just kind of as individual leaders. And so I think about that a little bit. Who could have predicted twenty twenty and what was going on? I think. When we were preparing for this conversation and kind of thinking back about. The time and just the uncertainty and ingenuity that it required back in twenty twenty. Going into twenty one, standing up public health infrastructure. I, I mean, I recall just sitting there being. Okay, vaccines are coming. How do we even get them transported, you know, from these special freezers out into. Seaside and Hood River, you know, out into rural communities and make sure. You know, there was a whole bunch of new things that we didn't think about, about how we serve communities across the state. You know, the uncertainty of PPE, you know, the kind of critical acute resources. I just remember, you know. Everyone coming together, looking for, how many ventilators do we have? How do we track them? Where are they available? And so I think. What I appreciate about the report is that it's consistent in speaking through kind of the strength of our healthcare system in Oregon to manage unforeseen and unprecedented times. And, you know, just that this, what we saw from twenty one to, from twenty to twenty one and then twenty, you know, and from nineteen to twenty, it just. Who would have thought? And it was, it's like Jeremy, I really appreciate your analogy of. You know, we've seen season one, you know, we're binge watching, you know, we know what two and three kind of happens. So anxious to kind of think about, you know, how this progresses as we look forward and even beyond twenty twenty four. Yeah.
Hey Felice, can I jump in with two more thoughts?
Of course you can.
So just taking my head back there a little bit, you know, I remember talking to a lot of lawmakers about. You know, is this going to work? What if it doesn't work? What if you don't miss, you don't meet the target? And, you know, my, my head at the, at the time and response to the time would been, it's not just about whether you meet the target or not. We're at a seven or eight percent growth rate, which is unsustainable. And there's going to be years we don't meet the target. That's what's going to, this is pre-pandemic, right? And we were saying, it's going to be years we don't meet the target. The issue is why? And trying to understand what's going on in the health system. It's a little bit less, obviously it wouldn't have been the cost curve, but. You know, the program's not a failure if you don't hit three point four percent. The, the success, I think, is trying to understand what's going on in the market, where the, where the challenges are. And for policymakers, I give them more information to be able to understand what to do about it. I, I was thinking, I think this was in twenty nineteen, I was at a conference in Chicago with, with governors, health policy advisors from across the country. And, and, and agency heads and was on a panel talking about this program. And I, I asked everybody in the room, I said. How many, raise your hand if you know how much roughly your Medicaid, your Medicaid budget is, how much you spend on Medicaid. And everybody raised their hand. Because Medicaid is the biggest budget item in every single state. And then I asked them, raise your hand if you know how much the total spend for healthcare is in your state. And only one person raised their hand. And that was a person from Massachusetts, because that's the only other state that had a cost for the target. And, and, you know, the reflection there is. States, churches that haven't even been understanding the full breadth of where, what's spent on healthcare and where it goes.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that you, I, I feel like there's a lot of nuggets in there that I want to talk a, a little bit more about actually from what you both said. I think. So, you know, you, we have the Costco of twenty nineteen and you all have been talking about the collaboration that it takes between payers and providers. And we've won cost growth target in our state, right? You each have to meet sort of your component of a cost growth target. So when you saw the report. And I, I assume that your organizations have spent some time digesting and thinking about your own data, but also thinking about. What are those relationships? Like, how are those relationships going to change? Are there things that you feel like are successes in your. Your relationships between pay, your, your payers and providers or, or challenges that you're, you kind of have to go back and think about more deeply? Either one of you can jump in.
I have thoughts, but mostly I see you collecting thoughts. Let me, let me jump in first. So, you know, I, I think a couple of things without getting too, I'm happy to get into the weeds on the details of the trend. But obviously, I think everybody knows, you know, we were on the higher end on commercial and everybody, everybody was high on the commercial side, right? We weren't alone in that. And I, I think when I look at the, the attribution at the provider level, largely the providers in our service areas were in that ballpark too. So our, our growth rate in the commercial market was not far off from where providers were, which sort of were around that, that piece as well. You know, I, I think as I've transitioned to this new job, one of the things that, you know, I've been doing is getting out and talking to providers again. And I, and I feel like, and most I don't want to speak on behalf of the organization, but I feel like especially in the hospital community. Folks are lifting their heads and looking left and right for the first time in several years, like, what the heck happened? And where do we go next? And so I don't, I think frankly, there hasn't, one of the things that did get slowed down through the pandemic was. Work around things like bio-based payment and total cost of care and we're having to kind of restart those conversations. And I think this report will. Probably help kickstart those conversations again, but it has largely been, I think, we, health systems, a lot of health systems have largely been in a, just how do we get from here to the end of the month? The next couple of months. And so I think now is the space where we, we actually do need to start to pick those conversations up that, you know. Sort of like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, you know, you can't really think ten years out when you're just trying to figure out how to get the next six months or year run.
You know, one of the things I would say is. Through the pandemic, it really showed when you're a provider organization. And you have total cost of care risk in partnership with a health plan. There was some steadiness, you weren't kind of. In the reimbursement model, you know, when yours, when you are responsible for a premium on the delivery side or on the provider side. And if utilization goes down, there's some kind of, that's helped, that was helpful during the pandemic to kind of keep the lights on and. You know, pay scuff and keep the doors open. So, in one way, it really showed moving down the land category to other. More total cost of care or shared savings agreements was, was helpful. In, from a provider lens, because you shared on kind of the reduced utilization. That we see from nineteen to twenty. And also, you know, some of those impacts from twenty to twenty one. And some of those care categories. So I think if anything, in one way, it really shined a light to say, you know, you're in this together. And sharing on that, on that total spend. In times of crisis, like what we saw, it just, it can help kind of show. What, what the stability that can provide in, in the reimbursement model. It's not just really based on the service. So. That's helped a convert, I don't, I think, you know, for us as a shared delivery and health and health insurance organization. I look at that anyway, in partnership with my part over on the health plan side. And we talk holistically around. Around that, but it really showed down at the provider level, you know, at a physician level to say, oh, you know, there's some, there's some, there's some good. Things to think about when we're sharing on those rest based contracts. So, that would be one thought.
That's great. So when you, when you both looked at the report and it comes out and you, what was the biggest? What was your surprise? Do you have, I have some surprises. And then I'm going to ask you, I, I just heard this thing called what was your glimmer? Glimmers are the things throughout the day that just make you happy. So, was there something in the report that you were like, huh? It just makes me happy. Well, Kate, that Melissa, what was your surprise or your, or your glimmer?
You know, I don't know, there was much that surprised me in seeing the report again. You know, I don't know, there was much that surprised me and seeing the report again. Um. I look at this information all the time.
Spoken like a chief operating.
Yeah. I mean, I look at this information all the time, so um, um. I probably more surprising to look um just comparatively to other organizations. That's probably where more of the interest. Being to say, um, you know, there's a lot of alignment across the lines of business and kind of seeing where people are. Um, I, you know, of course, I'm. You know, looking at it and seeing that we're not an outlier and in often cases, you know, like on. The commercial side, we're, we're kind of not on the extreme either way. Um. You know, that, that's just like, okay, well, we're all facing the same challenges. We all know that, but you know, we're kind of not out there one way or the other. From a providence lens, either on the insurance side or on the delivery side. Um, I think one of the things that surprised me um was the Medicaid um components, you know, that. Um, the utilization was down, you know, just knowing that the, the growth in. Um, the membership, um, knowing the behavioral health needs and kind of what we've seen come through our front doors in our EVs and that. The needs that I hear from our providers and the clinics around behavioral health seem that grow so much. Um, and then I think maybe the glimmer is similarly related. Uh, that are, that the health plan, you know, the health plan stepped up to pay for telehealth for behavioral health that, you know. More resources were identified and provided. Um, I think that that's probably a glimmer. Um, challenging across the community that, you know, behavioral health is such a need and continues to be such a need. But also that, you know, you see that in the data that we've responded, um, both the payers have been paying for the services as well as. The delivery systems, you know, finding resources and alternative models to provide that care.
Right.
Yeah, I, I similarly, I don't know that there was a thing that was like, oh my gosh, I was really not expecting that. I think. Um, and we, and we, this is really surprising, we see this across healthcare system constantly, but use the massive variation. Um, whether that's across pairs or across providers, I mean, again, we, we see this all over the place, so it's not really a surprise, but I think it's. Interesting to see and, you know, and, and the variation's huge. Um, you know, and I think important. I think important context, because I, I think some of the takeaway there is, is. I think the need to both zero in on what happened in an individual market in a given year, but then zoom out and say, okay, globally, what's happening over the course of a couple of years? Or what's happening across sort of all lines of business for care provider, because I think you missed some of the big, the big picture when you just look at. Um, just to get a sequelier. So I mean, that was some of the takeaway I saw. You don't see in the report, but our, some of our own internal analysis. Um, sort of preparing for the day and be able to see the giant dip of utilization in twenty twenty when um. When a lot of procedures were on hold and then the sort of the rebound and see where things were. And again, this is a little bit of the. Ah, like end of twenty twenty two was coming in a delta. And so you could see. Things starting to rebound in terms of deferred care, um, and, and really could see it very specifically that it's clearly deferred care. I mean, it was.
Yeah.
Chemotherapy, it was orthopedic surgeries, you know, and, and. And then you're kind of like, ah, I want to see what happened in twenty twenty three, you know, did it stabilize? Did we go back down with Delta and Omicron and come back? So there's a little bit of just. You know, not having the whole story, but. Um, but I think really be able to see those pieces of the pandemic that played out and that are real in terms of real people being really impacted and thinking about. You know, while cancer treatments that were delayed or screens that didn't happen, uh, and seeing that show up in the data is pretty startling.
Yeah, I, I think that that's a really good, you know, I feel like when Sarah went through the report and. Um, Peter went through the report, I feel like there were these themes that got pulled out, you know, I think utilization was a, was a theme. I think the behavioral health. Um, component was a theme, the higher acuity was the theme, um, shifting care sites. Um, and so those sort of themes and challenges in this report, I think, as we're waiting for season two. Um, I think, how are you, how did you guys look at those themes and were they true for your organizations? Were they off for your organizations? And um, and then the other thing I think. Uh, Melissa, you said something about the COVID pandemic that I think was very interesting is that in that moment of crisis. Um, you had, you know, a lot of uncertainty, but it drove some ingenuity. Um, and so do you, do you feel like as an organization, is that my other question is that ingenuity and uncertainty? And these themes where you were changing, how you did behavioral health changing? Do you think you became more flexible as entities that you were able to take on different challenges?
I, um, I think that one of the things that as I was reflecting back, back in twenty nineteen, we had made some. Um, and made some investment or started some investment in technology to kind of. Um, and, and we call it air traffic control. And I know OHSU has similar um technology. We learned a lot from them at the course of twenty twenty, where, you know, we can see all the beds across all of our hospitals in the single system. We weren't able to do that before. And I know we were able to do this across the state and then, you know, we kind of expanded upon that specifically and. That has just been transformational in kind of making sure that you've got the right beds and the right staff at the right place for the patients needed. Is that, that just that alone allowed us to grow our inpatient capacity. Um, in twenty one, you know, by close to a hundred beds. And that's not because we built a new tower or we, you know, it just was really. Matching where there's space and, you know, where there's a need. And the, the thing that I, that I loved about it and that I continue to be impressed by is, you know, we'll have a patient that. Maybe an ED, an emergency department is on the Burt, and so they end up being taken to a hospital that's further away from their home. But then you can look at it and say, oh, they're in the zip code that's actually closer to Newburgh than it is to St. Vincent's. And so when the time is right and when there's a bed available, we can move them back closer to. You know, a, a hospital or facility or care that's kind of closer to their community. And so. That's something that we weren't, we didn't have this, the technology to do. And then there were some of that that was forced in. Kind of where there were resource constraints during the pandemic. Um, and I'm excited about that because it just, it, it allows us to kind of use the infrastructure that we have. To make sure that we're kind of doing a better job, keeping people in their communities and getting them the right care. Similarly, telehealth, we were, you know, really pushed into saying. You know, how can we sell a health in different ways to provide care? So, you know, people weren't always able or willing to come into our facilities. Like we're traditionally used to. And so that has provided flexibility, which has been ongoing and, you know, us. You know, providers being more open into providing that type of care. It's also a work balance in some cases for our physicians, right? There are days now they work from home and they do telehealth visits with their patients. Who may be less mobile or able to get to one of our facilities. So I think those are a couple of examples. I also just want to reflect back onto something that we said around that shift in care.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we were well along the spectrum of moving services from kind of high cost inpatient to, you know, lower cost sites. Like outpatient. And so when you look at the report and you see the growth of outpatient. It's not surprising, but it also is surprising because we really did see shifts of services that I think are not coming back. You know, it was before maybe there was a capacity, now there really isn't capacity. And so that shift from inpatient to outpatient, um. Whether it be, I mean, we've seen it with. We, over time, and then just really pretty dramatically and starkly from twenty and twenty one. And I don't, I don't think that's changing. I think it's a good thing. Like you say, some in the report, not all, not all of these trends are bad. We see growth, it, it may actually be what we're expecting. Uh, whether it be growth in primary care or lower cost sites, and just understanding what that all looks like together. And may, maybe just one other thing, Jeremy, that struck me. I think about um the cancer screenings that didn't happen in twenty twenty, that's the example. And I look at a service like oncology and. Um, some treatments are down, like gamma knife is down. And as a finance person, I'm like, where, what's going on? But it really is those patients you see are not eligible for that. And they have to go into for more invasive, you know, treatments. The gamma knife isn't really something that's acceptable because the cancer's grown larger and now they have to go for more invasive treatments. And that's just. Um, that has happened in ortho, it's happened in cardiac. And I think we'll continue to see that unfortunately is just what's happened with the, the pandemic. In the lean care. Um, we'll continue to see that. We are in twenty three and I think we'll continue to see that moving forward for a few more years.
Yeah. So I just want to touch on, I'm sorry, Jeremy, just before you go. I think you said something that I think is a really good example of that ingenuity. Um, in both the care and the cost piece that I just want to highlight this idea that now. Investing in where you can see all of the beds and being able to treat people closer to home. So, good for the ca, patients, really good for the bottom line. And I think the cost growth target hopefully will reflect that as long. Along with the other programs that we're investing in. And that's a great example of sort of how we. That collaboration and ingenuity between providers and pairs are very critical. So we really appreciate highlighting that. Jeremy?
Yeah, you know, kind of going back to me when the ahas and Melissa's brought this up a couple of times is, is really around the behavioral health and just seeing how stark that. Um, sort of driving utilization was. It's the only area that we saw zero dip in twenty twenty. I mean, it's just grew and kept growing. Um, and it's also the only area that hasn't received it in terms of telehealth. Um. You know, so it's, it's good that people are getting this, you know, hopefully getting easier access to services, although I think we all know that there's really significant access challenges out there, right? So. Um, I can only imagine the demand if we're seeing utilization and we all hear the stories of friends and family who, who can't find a, can't find a clinician who's, who's open to patients. Um, but I think it's really stark and, you know, I think. Mental health diagnoses were, were three of the top four um prevalence disease for uh per, per thousand in our data was, was mental health related. So you can just see the, the huge, huge need out there. Um, and I think that's a big area that none of us know exactly how to, how to crack that nut, you know, and I think just continues to show that that is, that is an area we're gonna have to continue to figure out. As a state, how to, how to address. Um, but, you know, the innovation, you know, I feel like early in the pandemic. Um, there was a lot of, hey, how do we free up beds? Um, and then things kind of were initially a little bit slower than we thought, you know, but there was a lot of that home, like how do we get hospital level of care at home? You know, and then, and then there was like the just complete inundation of the variants, right? And I think, I think we're gonna start to see. More of that, those conversations start to, um, start to occur. And I'm hearing about it in bits and pieces, um, and the community of. Hey, we really, really need to figure out what really should be in a hospital or what shouldn't and, um, or could be done somewhere else. Um, I think the post-acute. Care discharge challenge that a lot of hospitals are facing is gonna continue to drive that and probably, and probably drive. Some community level conversations of how some of these parts of the system work together that aren't quite, still are quite jelling, right? And how do you get patients in and out um quicker and um and get it to the right, the right level of care? There's still a lot of work that needs to happen there. And I think. That's a prime space for some innovation. Um, you know, I, I also kind of think. You know, we're gonna have redeterminations uh in Medicaid over the next fourteen months. Um, a lot of folks are gonna move back to employer sponsored coverage. They're gonna move back to co-pays and deductibles that maybe they haven't felt the last couple of years. And I think that's gonna, you know, I think. It's just gonna be interesting to see, you know, I think some, not to say that nobody's been facing cost challenges, but I think there's a, there's a good number of folks who are gonna. Have out of pocket costs that they didn't have last couple of years. And that might really start to put some downward pressure in terms of. Um, sustainability in the commercial market, um, and, and, and hopefully that spurs some good innovative conversations around what we, what we can do about it.
Yeah, that's, I feel like that's a good point. Um, Melissa, do you want to talk from a hospital perspective about the, the discharge? Data or the discharge challenge and how this impacts the cost growth target?
Yeah, I think um, a couple of things, um. That was part of what pushed kind of where can we find additional beds and how can we ship patients and make sure they're close to their community? Um, because we just had patients that got stuck without the, without the resources and it's. It's funny to think, it's not funny, it's, but you think back to twenty one and, you know, there were a lot of times we couldn't discharge patients. Um, because there was COVID in the post-acute setting. And so there wasn't, you know, they weren't accepting patients in the unit or. Um, and it really ended up leading also to um. Challenges as workforce, you know, workforce um not being available because they were sick and um. It feels like a whole different time, but the challenges um still remain um from twenty one into twenty two and twenty three. Where we just don't have, you know, we've got patients in our facilities that don't need medical level acute care. Um, and we. Don't have the safety net available to move them into places that are more appropriate. And that is just driving costs. Um, I think our estimate is it's about, in our organization, you know, it's eight hundred dollars a day. And we're not usually getting paid for those patients, um, when they've kind of met, they've met their medical kind of discharge requirements. But then we don't have any place to go. We're, we're not getting paid anymore for those patients, but we are kind of holding them to say. We want to make sure there's a safe place for them to go. And so that, to Jeremy, your point, that's a different kind of conversation than just, um. Uh, and with different groups, whether it be community partners, um, whether it looks for alternative funding. They're in the same crisis around labor and workforce as everyone else is across our state in all different, you know, um. Um, markets, uh, they're just, our challenges with finding enough people to do. That are, that do the work that needs to be done and provide the care. So. I, I'm excited to see some of the innovation um that's happening in those spaces, both internally. We've turned a couple of floors into respite care to say, you know, you don't need medical level care, you don't need physician oversight. We've got, you know, an old space that is available. So how do we stack that? More along the lines with respite or with skilled nursing. Um, even though it's um probably not our forte, but it is, you know, a need for those patients and looking for discharge. I think investments in social workers and case managers and really recognizing that specialty um and how those. Focuses are different, um, oftentimes in communities and what the needs are. Um, and then that, just that partnership with community organizations. I know right now we're in discussion. Um, you know, we've been looking at opportunities for making donations, land donations for building with community partners, for residential facilities. Or for, you know, uh, low cost housing. I think it's spurring a whole nother level of conversation and where there are resources and how we partner. It just feels slow. It just feels really slow now. And so how we use this information to accelerate those conversations, I think. Would be important.
Yeah, you know, I think it's interesting. I think both of you touched on sort of this, this uh investment in the public health space. And how, you know, pre pandemic, the difference, the how you have to shift your organization to be much more public health focused. How you're, how you're thinking more, um, you have to, being very good at, you know, the individual healthcare, shifting to that more population based care. Because that's what's gonna impact sort of overall costs, but also the outcomes that you're seeing, that level of acuity and other components that you're seeing. And. Um, I think that that's an interesting takeaway that I don't feel like is really highlighted in the report. Um, but I think is one of the sort of uh key components that you're both raising.
I think it's one of those like to be continued episodes, right? This is season three is probably that where that starts really showing.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's one of those things where it's like, it's, it's hard when you're drilling down, deep down in the data to kind of take that step back. But, you know, we, we have just kicked off with. One of our hospital partners of um work around this post-acute care, because it's just like who. You know, we're the largest pair in the community and, and it's, you know, we're not a provider, but we're like, who can help convene and have, you know. And, and obviously, we have some of the data and it's a lot of our members and we've seen like the stage is steadily increased. And that's. That's a cost of system, it's also not good for members either, right? I mean, folks want to be able to get in and out and, um, and have high quality care. So. You know, that doesn't show up anywhere in here, but that's, you know, a body of work that's sort of us as a pair trying to figure out how do we solve this community. Challenge in partnership with our, with our provider partners.
So we have a, a couple of minutes left. And so I, I want to ask actually, what are our predictions? So if you were to think about this, what are you predicting for season, for season two, Jeremy?
Well, I think, um, I, I think you're gonna see largely the utilization is back to the twenty nineteen levels and continue to increase. And if you look back over a couple of years, you can see there was this dip and it returned. And. Um, I think you're gonna continue to see challenges in the, in the commercial market in, in particular. You know, I think that one of the things that's not sort of overlaid over this, um, that was interesting is. Um, and this may not, maybe this wouldn't be the case in every state, but we have a highly competitive insurance market. And so there is sort of a direct. Um, inverse correlation between cost growth and um, and margin, right? So we had the highest cost growth and, and fifteen percent commercial. We also had a negative seven and a half percent margin that year, um, because. You know, the spending was going out the door. And so, um, I think you're gonna continue to see some volatility into twenty twenty three um around that. Uh, I also think you're gonna see um COVID cases um hit more of the commercial market in twenty twenty two. I think they're a little, the, the inpatient cases were more. um, COVID cases, um, hit more of the commercial market in twenty twenty two. I think they're a little, the, the inpatient cases were more Medicare population, which was sort of more vulnerable. The started trickle more into the commercial market as you've had Delta and Omicron. Um, and so I think you'll see some of those more COVID related costs, um, hit the commercial market in, in twenty twenty three.
Right. Um, Melissa?
Yeah, I, I worry when I think about the future, I worry a lot around just that volatility and how um, we, we settle ourselves and kind of rewrite size. We had this kind of balance it, this imbalance balance on, you know, funding sources and, and how that looked. And I think I, I worry about the next few years and the volatility around that. Um. And that, I mean, that, that's, I guess, what I worry about is when I, I hear, you know, you see nationally, um, hospitals closing their doors, particularly rural areas, um, how do we ensure that we're able to, you know, kind of keep services available and open for the community and needs because we already don't have enough. So access. Um, and, and that costs, you know, that takes resources, both in, you know, we've lost a fifth of our healthcare workforce, whether that be you know, physicians or whether that be, you know, technical or nursing, um. How, how we kind of over the next few years rebuild that capacity up, you know? Personally, I come from a, my mom was a health careers teacher at Beaverton High School, um, in the Beaverton School District and I told, I was part of that health careers program, you know, so I grew up in.
That worked out.
Yeah, and, um, I think about, I'm, those programs, we need more of those programs, right? That people leave with C N A one and C N A twos. And now that program has an M A program, you know, how do we look for those opportunities to develop our high school, you know, students early and get them into the workforce over the next few years. Cause that's our first opportunity. It'll take longer to grow the rest of the workforce, but um, the, I guess that's what I worry about. I really worry about the stability over the next few years. Costs are going to continue to raise until we can kind of rewrite size stuff and how we afford that, I think is concerning. Um. As we innovate and look for, you know, um, the work that we engaged in in twenty nineteen, right? We're like, we're back in eighteen nineteen, you know, we have to re-ground ourselves, but this, this volatility period, I think, was.
Yeah. Well, I, uh, really appreciate, uh, you two participating today. I think that it's, I feel like you can take a look at a report on paper, but it doesn't sort of give you the insights into what folks are thinking on the ground. And I think that both of you will play a very big hand in your systems, obviously, and implementing to get us to the target in the future. And I think for you, Melissa, that's being on the cost growth advisory board as well as being the leader inside Providence. And, you know, for Jeremy, and I like to teach him about moving from job to job to transform our healthcare system. So I just really appreciate you both being here today. And also, um, I think that there's a lot of really big takeaways here that the, the, looking at sort of the volatility of the system and how do we, how do we smooth that out, the sort of taking the good and the, the glimmers, if you will, from the ingenuity that COVID actually created in a crisis. Uh, let's take the best lessons we can and how we move forward. And I think, um, you know, when we look at the sort of variations, um, i- across the market, can we learn, create collaborations with each other and, and make some changes together and what those look like? Um, and I also, I, I also want to say that I really appreciate both of you sort of with your eye on the prize around this is about containing costs in your systems, but the reality is, is it's about the people that we serve in Oregon and containing, ultimately getting those costs contained for those people because of the impacts on them. So I appreciate, appreciate your time today. So.
Thanks, Felicia. And I just want to give a huge, again, huge kudos to the staff. Uh, this was a huge lift to get here and, and, um, they maintained this work through the pandemic, uh, despite a lot of barriers. And I think everybody should be really proud of, of getting to today.
Yeah, I also want to just express my gratitude to O H A um, for the leadership, like developing the program. Uh, also the opportunity to participate, participate today and, um, appreciation for most of you uh, facilitating, um, Felicia, the panel participating, Jeremy, um, I thought leadership is really important for us. So thank you for the chance to be a part of it.
Thank you so much. So Jaron, we're going to turn it back to you to add the slides back up and then hand it over, I believe, to Sarah, but I'm probably saying the wrong person. Thank you.
Peter, Peter and Bill are going to wrap us up.
Ah, Peter, there we go.
That's great. Thanks, Melissa. Thanks, Jeremy. Um, really important discussion. You know, I take away from that, um, Felice's comments about taking away the best from COVID. And when you think about the intragigants of systems in general, um, or processes, if you want to think about it in that way. COVID showed us that things that we had on a ten year trajectory plan, think about remote work, think about telehealth. We were able to get things that we thought would take ten years done in about three weeks. And, and there's the opportunity to take some of those lessons about changing the structure of the system to achieve some of the goals that we have. So before I kick this over to Bill, I'd like to ask if there's anyone on the advisory committee or anyone on the policy board that would like, uh, to have a few comments before we close up.
Next. One thing, can I, can I just make, can I make a request, Peter, is if you have the bandwidth, if you're on the Oregon Health Policy Board or on the Cost Growth Advisory Committee, if you could just, um, turn your camera on for a minute, so people who are participating can actually see those folks. Um, so we kind of know who we are and, uh, um, know who the, who the players are here.
Thanks for that, Felice. I think it's really important and I, I want to thank all of you for all of the time you put in uh, on this. Uh, you're not done yet. There's lots more to do. Um. Next slide, please. And I just want to make sure, did anyone have a comment? Now that you've got your camera on, this is your chance. So I think the next steps are really important as we think about what the legislature's trying to accomplish, which is to ensure that over a course of time, healthcare costs are not growing faster than wages and inflation for Oregonians. It's a really, really clean, easy thing to get your hand around. Um. The cost growth target advisory committee is going to continue its identification and selection of, uh, mitigation strategies. I think that's really the next important piece. We've got the data, we've done the reporting. Now we've got to identify what's causing some of those costs. Next slide, please. So save the date, September fourteenth, nine AM to noon, once again, a three hour, um, either virtual or in-person conference. We don't know, uh, we, we haven't determined that yet. But we're going to dig deeper in with payers and providers on that issue. Bill, I'm going to send it back to you.
All right. Thanks very much, Peter. Uh, thanks to both you and Felice for your leadership on the Cost Growth Target Advisory Committee. This is hard work, uh, but it's really important work to identify like what the data show, uh, what the causes of cost growth are and, and ways to, uh, um, address the, the, uh, cost growth targets to, to make healthcare more affordable for all Oregonians. So on behalf of the Oregon Health Policy Board, I'd also like to thank everyone who participated in today's meeting. Uh, the panelists, uh, the advisory committee members, board members, uh, the Oregon Health Health, Health Authority staff and all of you who watched or listened, uh, to today's meeting. Uh, the Health Policy Board considers the Costco target program to be one of the most important initiatives currently underway in Oregon. Along with related efforts, uh, to improve access and equity uh, and quality in our healthcare system, we need to ensure that healthcare is affordable uh, to patients, consumers, employers and taxpayers. Uh, we will be using the valuable information from these recent reports as well as today's presentation as we work with all of you to shape health policy in Oregon. Thanks again to all, and we look forward to a robust discussion at the next Cost Growth Target Advisory Committee meeting in September. Thanks.